Special meeting of the Waco City Council on January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three to order at eight thirty-seven A.M. Would you please join me for a moment of silence? Thank you. We will begin the work session for the consideration and discussion of the applicants to fill the city council District Four vacancy. The, uh, we will call each applicant to the table and each applicant will begin the interview with a three to five minute presentation explaining why they would be an ideal candidate to fill this role. And then we will have a series of questions that each candidate will be asked uniformly that I will ask. I think we have nine questions for the group. And so with that, I will call our first applicant and that is Mr. David Schlecker.
Can you hear me all right?
If you would, if you would like to proceed, if you have any, um, a, a, a presentation that you'd like to give, then proceed with that and then we'll follow up with questions.
All right. Thank you for having me this morning. It's, it's rare in life. I can still get nervous making a presentation, but maybe this morning is one of those. My name is David Schlecker. If the spelling is confusing, you need only remember it rhymes with Riker. That works. The good news is I don't think I have any vast store of knowledge I need to share with you. So my PowerPoint is, is one slide long, uh, which is up there now. I live a short walk from here at Ninth and Jefferson. Uh, work a shorter walk from here. My sister and I are the original tenants at the reconstructed twenty-five end building and share a wall with dichotomy. I first came to Waco in nineteen eighty-four for undergraduate, stayed for law school. Nineteen eighty-nine, left for D.C. for seven years, uh, came back in ninety-six. Uh, my wife, Anne Claire, works in District Four, which is to say from an office in our home. My mother, on the other hand, is a twenty-six year resident of Waco over on Wooded Acres. And then we've been fortunate to have a niece move here who lives in District Two.
Yay.
Across from the university high school. I had the pleasure of, um, voting on, on to get built. So some, five ties that bind to District Four. Uh, number five, my wife worked for four years in Indian Spring Middle School. Number four, our daughter went through Waco High in District Four. Number three, I have, uh, served as volunteer youth minister at a church in District Four. Number two, as an attorney, I have nonprofit clients in District Four. Already had a brief conversation with the city attorney, just in case there ever is a conflict of interest, how to handle that. Uh, they, those nonprofits I represent in District Four do great work like help disadvantaged youth, build houses for first time homeowners, provide medical care to people who otherwise likely would not receive it, and, uh, train veterans to become farmers. Then number one, I served six years as an elected member of the Waco School Board and at large member, which meant District Four was entirely within the area I represented. I campaigned door to door there, uh, went to visit those schools. As you'll see the picture there from West Avenue Elementary.
That's awesome.
I, to really know me, uh, to know why I loved raising our daughter in Waco. If you think back to August of twenty seventeen, there had been the rally in Charlottesville. My daughter wanted to do something to respond to that and the racism of that. So, uh, with assistance from a local pastor and me, we put together Waco's response to Charlottesville. And when we thought about who to speak at that, I called the then Chair of the Republican Party, who's a friend, John Carr. We had the Chair of the Democratic Party speak. We had a rabbi speak. We had someone from the Islamic Center speak, someone from Truitt Seminary. Peaches Henry from the N double A C P spoke. Wesley Lloyd, who is president of the McLennan County Republican Party spoke. Uh, and the lesson I took from that was that when it matters most, Waco can come together in one voice, um, and we'll stand united. With that, I'm ready for the questions.
Very good. Thank you, David. It's a great presentation. Um, question number one is, did you vote in the last municipal election for District Four?
So that turned out to be a more complicated question than it looks like. Uh, we were moving from District Three to District Four in twenty twenty, so I spent ten minutes at the elections office this morning. And, uh, yes, 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 I did.
How do you see your role on the Waco City Council and what do you hope to accomplish as a city council member?
So if we think of the city council as doing a four hundred meter relay, I feel like if I got this appointment, the coach would be saying to me, I need you to run one lap of this long relay. So I think the instructions would be, don't fall down, don't slow down the other runners, and don't drop the baton. I would hope the kids, and if we can put that slide back up, uh, these kids who would be in their twenties now, my hope would be that just as they knew that I cared about them then, that they would still know that their voice was being heard in council meetings, whether, you know, they've gone on to be a medical student resident at Waco Family Medicine or entrepreneur, uh, whatever they're doing now, I would want them to know that their voice and their concerns are being heard. If there were a genie that said to me, you will have two wishes granted for this short time you're on the council. My first would be to get to vote yes on some significant affordable housing project like those that are being done. I got to advocate for that and do that when I was on the Waco, on the Waco School Board, having no idea that I would once, one day live across the street from the old Waco High that's now affordable housing. But it brings me profound joy to, uh, walk past the old Waco High or sit on my balcony and listen to the kids play and think I did at least one thing right on, on the Waco School Board. The second would be, and again, this is a genie, granny a wish, I would love to vote yes on a side selection and partnership agreements for Performing Arts Center. In short, I'd want to have left a very brief legacy of continuing to promote growth as you all have done while making sure that no one was left behind.
Thank you, Dave. What do you see as opportunities and challenges facing our city?
Well, I think it is that, um, dichotomy between growing, continuing to attract tourists, new residents, companies with higher paying jobs, while on the other hand, making sure that, uh, people all over the city feel that they are benefiting from the growth. I think there is a crowd that loves the growth, that loves what Magnolia's doing, that is excited every time there's a new restaurant, and I count myself among those. But I also hear from people that say, I don't need Waco to grow. I want my street paved, my taxes are going up. And my concern is that there is the possibility that if we don't manage growth correctly, that that group that doesn't want change then becomes hardened in their position. And then you finally get to a point, maybe where people are voting down bond packages or something. And I don't think we're there yet, but I want to make sure that both the, you know, the entrepreneurial voice is heard, uh, as well as the people who don't want their neighborhoods to change.
Very good. What do you see as the opportunities and challenges facing District Four, if any different from the city?
Uh, I don't really see it. I, I, I think in, in many ways, it, it may be more diverse than some other districts. But really, the entire city, you know, as a whole is diverse and that is an opportunity. Uh, I don't see that as a challenge, but an opportunity. But, uh, again, it's that, how do we promote the economic growth? Do it sustainably and do it in a way that makes sure, uh, to make sure that, you know, whether someone owned a business here for twenty years or has just moved here from another state, that they feel like this is a welcoming place and that the city is behind them. That we all win small business grant, I think is a perfect example of that. It also shows how we work with the nonprofits, which are an important part of what Waco does successfully with the Hispanic Chamber and the African American Chambers helping to make sure the business owners can work their way through that program.
Very good. Tell us what you think you will bring to the position that others may not. Please provide examples of volunteer opportunities or services that you've provided in the community.
I think you're definitely going to have some applicants that will have a longer list of, uh, nonprofit board service than me. I am on the Keep Waco Beautiful Board and was previously, but I intentionally try to stay off of nonprofit boards because I'm so frequently called on by nonprofit to avoid or, or resolve a crisis. But what I suspect no one else on the list would have done is to, as I mentioned earlier, is to have represented District Four as an elected official. In that, in that work on the school board, I have experienced successfully working with a handful of other officials in the, in the board setting or council sort of setting, dealing with budgets and the hundreds of millions of dollars without being alarmed by the numbers. Experienced knowing not how to take it personally when you make a difficult decision and then the, you know, haters gonna hate and you just have to move on or, uh, send them a message that says, I hope you find peace. And also experience being aware of the fact that if you screw up, it may be a five second screw up, you may be on the news for two minutes that night. I remember we came home once and we were having a new roof put on and as I drove up with Berkeley in the car, who was a young person at the time, uh, there, I saw that the roofers had a kit up on the roof. And Berkeley immediately said, "School bo-, child falls off school board member's roof." And I was like, you, you get it, you understand. We have to be extra cautious, extra careful in what we do.
Uh, very good. Please explain your understanding of the city council's role in a council manager form of government and how do you, uh, how would you work to govern effectively according to our city charter?
I think in summary, that the council writes the rules of the road while the city manager drives the car. In other words, if I were a District Four council member in a city of a hundred and fifty thousand people and it were a full-time job, I would think I was doing it wrong, that I was micromanaging rather than providing oversight. There was a similar division of labor that I had to be aware of when I was on the school board. Hiring and firing the superintendent, that was school board work. Managing the rest of the staff, hiring them, generally the superintendent's work. Approving budgets, setting tax rates, writing policy, school board work. Day-to-day running of the school superintendent work. Handling a constituent complaint, um, superintendent, but making sure that a constituent understood the process for complaining or that your calls didn't go unanswered. Both the superintendent's responsibility and my responsibility as a, a board member.
Are you, um, are you running in the May twenty twenty-three District Four election?
I'm not, but if anyone wishes to discuss it off mic, I do have someone to suggest.
Very good. Thank you for your time today. Before we conclude, do you have any, any additional information regarding your qualifications for this position or any questions for us?
Uh, yes, one other, I'd like to address the elephant or the, maybe the donkey and the elephant in the room.
Well said.
And this is going to upset some people because I know I have upset people, including friends before when I've said it. And that I, I should disclose to the council, it's my position that as important as it is for us all to be involved in national level politics, I think at the city council or school board level, it is poison. And I don't like council members or board members, uh, school board members to have their party ID on the ballot. I don't even like unofficial list of candidates going around of which, you know, one party or the other should support. A friend and I wrote this in an April twenty-four twenty twenty Waco Tribune column where we were complaining about how divided the country had become nationally. We said, "Here at home, we maintain a strong preference for city councils, school boards, and other community focused institutions that resolve problems in a healthy, nonpartisan manner, reaching across ideologies as needed for workable solutions." So I would appreciate the opportunity to do that with each of you.
Thanks, David. Do you have any questions for us?
I do not.
Thank you so much for your willingness to serve, David. We sure do appreciate your willingness. I know it's from a place of wanting to serve your community. It's gonna be an incredibly difficult, um, decision for us and it's not one that I personally relish because there are so many qualified, kind and competent applicants that have applied. So all I can say is thank you so much, sincerely.
Well, thank you all for your service.
And the next, um, interviewee we have on the agenda, um, or applicant rather, is Rory Parton.
Rory, sit.
Um, yeah, why don't we sit just to keep it consistent, if you don't mind? Thanks. That's what we've done in the past and we're creatures of habit here.
Yes.
Appreciate you.
No problem.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, it's good to be, I was going to say standing here, but now sitting here this morning. Uh, as you know, my name is Rory Parton. I'm originally from South Louisiana and I moved to Waco just over two years ago. In my career, I've literally lived on every coast of our country, so I've been asked a lot why I would move to Waco, Texas. And my answer, it could only be God. I mean, I've also been asked why I want to be, why I want to serve a government at a time when everything seems to be so difficult and everyone seems to be so divided. And my answer's the same. It could only be God. One thing to know about me is that I'm not a politician, I'm a leader. Thinking back, I remember being on my way to Peru to teach music, to teach music in a poverty stricken area. And on the way, I had a friend tell me, Rory, you're always thinking about others. And I gotta be honest with you, that really bothered me. I started thinking, is that why I've never reached The Rock or movie Stardom that I always dreamed of reaching? You know, have I let my family down about not being that guy who would do whatever it took to make it? Honestly, it was, it was a struggle. And it was several years before I allowed myself to recognize how serving and loving on others actually gave me energy and made me happy. And also I began recognizing how much I really enjoyed solving problems, finding workarounds, leading people in teams and helping them excel. And finally, I allowed myself to recognize that I'm really good at it. And that was about the time I felt a tiny voice beginning to speak to me about governmental leadership. It was so foreign to the world of music and acting that I'd been in for so long, I couldn't see a connection between the two. Plus, I was living in Los Angeles at the time and, uh, being committed follower of Jesus and conservative doesn't really present many serious governmental leadership opportunities in that area. So I moved it to the back of my mind and put my nose to the grindstone again, kept moving forward in music and acting. And around that time, my health began failing and I was eventually diagnosed with lymphoma cancer. Spent several months taking chemo in Nashville, Tennessee. At that point, my full-time job was pretty much beating cancer, you know? I had plenty of time to think, pray, consider my life direction, the choices I was making with regards to it. And that tiny voice and pull towards government leadership got louder and stronger. We moved back to Burbank, California in order to keep our health insurance. And over the next three years, it became really obvious how much I enjoy leading, coming up with solutions to challenges and serving and loving on people. And that voice and pull towards governmental leadership got stronger and stronger. Then about two and a half years ago, my wife and I bought a historic home in the Sanger Heights neighborhood, straight up the street here, and moved to Waco, Texas. My wife, a Baylor alum, has even taught me to say sic 'em bears. Kinda proud of that, being an LSU fan, you know? Since moving here, I've taken courses on and studied our constitution, citizenship, got elected as vice president, president-elect of our neighborhood association, Sanger Heights. Served as an election judge, applied for, attended, and graduated from Waco City Academy. Woo-hoo! Which, by the way, is really good, guys. Please keep that going. That is really great. I'm preparing, reaching out, and walking through doors as they open. When I was told on Friday that Kelly had resigned her position on a Friday, I was approached at the same time about applying for the interim position since I just met Michelle Hicks at the Waco City Academy. I, uh, first thing Monday morning, I was on the phone and talking to her office to, uh, see what the process and to apply would be. I stayed in touch and followed the process closely and when the opportunity came, I applied and here we are. I've written a number one song, a number of top ten songs, won awards, performed all over the world, literally for millions of people. But my story's not one of a man enduring struggle and failure to rise from the ashes and become a musical movie star, obviously. My story is one of a man being formed and refined by difficulties, struggles, success, life-threatening sickness, amazing experience, performing and serving around the world in thirty-something countries, formed by study of our government and constitution. And above all, I've been formed and refined by study of scripture and constant prayer. I'm a leader who believes in serving and that is the foundation of our government of, by, and for the people. We are a country that will only live its potential and call if our citizens stand to serve, so here I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we'll now move to the questions, uh, portion of the interview. The first question is, did you vote in the last District Four election?
Yes, I voted in every election since moving to Waco. I take that responsibility very seriously.
Very good. How do you see your role on the Waco City Council and what do you hope to accomplish as a city council member?
Uh, I see my role in the Waco City Council as someone who serves and represents the people of Waco in their best interests, while also specifically advocating for the people in my district, the place where my family and I have made a home. I hope to find ways to bring the people of Waco together. If we walk, all work together for the good of each other, we'll also be working for the good of Waco. Waco is people, right?
Very good. What do you see as opportunities and challenges facing our city?
I took the liberty of writing these down so I could be more concise.
Great.
Uh, opportunities bring challenges, as we all know, and challenges bring opportunity for solutions and forward-moving momentum, thankfully. I see great opportunities for Waco to take advantage of the amazing assets we already have. And with every opportunity comes challenges. We have the opportunity to provide the needed infrastructure, as you guys are doing, so the people of Waco are able to heartily participate in bettering their lives and thus bettering the city. Opportunity has a window and it is important for leadership to recognize when, when the window is open. An opportunity for things such as street repairs, street lighting for safety and appeals, sidewalks, parks, upgrading our public utilities, fire, police, public health, and many of these things you guys are already doing, so kudos on the fantastic work I've been seeing. Rescuing historic buildings so they can be refurbished and put into use in ways that help raise up the people of Waco. Rescuing historic housing, continuing development of our amazing riverfront properties in downtown. Not only is it an opportunity for Wacoans to enjoy them even more, but in order that they may find opportunity for business ventures and betterment of their lives and the lives of those employed in these businesses. As I mentioned, every opportunity brings its challenges and many of these bring funding challenges. As we all know, budget only goes so far and thoughtful, well-researched, prayerful decisions must be made. We have the opportunity to bring greater awareness of Waco as a much desired destination for business and pleasure, while helping to establish a clear narrative and identity as a people in a city. I'm tired of hearing, you moved to Waco, what about the Branch Davidians? Can we get past that? I love it that Waco is being redefined already. I see it happening and catch the energy all around me. And I say that we want to develop a clear narrative and identity as a people in a city because, as I mentioned before, the people of Waco are the city. Which leads me to the opportunity of providing grants or loans to individuals or groups to help bring about the needed revitalization of Waco's neighborhoods. Uh, I know this is already happening on many levels and this could also look like grants or loans to empower city residents to establish business villages using the empty buildings already existing at intersections with the neighborhoods. This not only opens opportunity for employment and prosperity to residents, but also for pride and for the potential shift to gener-, of generational mindsets that will positively affect and influence the next generations who are the future of Waco. Along this, would be, along with this, would be the need for accessible business coaching and training, which could also be provided through a city public partnership, which I'm a big advocate of. I see opportunity for increased partnership with organizations already at work improving the lives of Wacoans, particularly the lives of those living in impoverished conditions, which includes much, much of my neighborhood.
Um, the next question is, what do you see as opportunities and challenges facing District Four, if any different from the city?
Yeah. Um, as I mentioned, opportunities bring challenges and challenges obviously bring opportunity for solutions and forward-moving momentum. I'm currently, as I mentioned, the vice president and president-elect of the Neighborhood Association there in Sanger Heights. And, uh, our neighborhood is a low-income neighborhood and sits in part of what is known as a food desert. That's a crazy thing to say, right? I mean, this, this shouldn't be, not in our country, not in Waco, not in my neighborhood. That bothers me. So I think getting Wacoans involved on a greater scale and forming community in their neighborhoods and with their neighbors, reaching out to help each other when in need and thus becoming involved in creating organic, sustainable solutions to many of the problems that we face daily. Again, in my neighborhood particularly, continue to increase partnership with organizations already at work in those neighborhoods, improving the lives. That's one thing I'm doing with my neighborhood association is trying to partner, already partnering and trying to reach out and partner with more of the nonprofits working in our area so that we can have this cross synergy to actually make things happen. Instead of picking up trash on the street and thinking we're doing our due diligence and a good work in my neighborhood, how about we get to work and help people in this food desert, really? So crime's an issue in District Four that needs to be addressed. We need to find lasting solutions to this problem. It's gonna take creativity. Uh, as vice president of the Sanger Heights Neighborhood Association, I'm already partnering with grassroots and Mission Waco and have reached out to area churches to try and implement, implement some simple creative solutions to the issue as well, as well as finding ways to better serve our people together. Another opportunity I've seen in our district is the improvement of sidewalks and street lighting for safety. There are some major black holes in our, uh, district and it's just not safe. My wife would love to go walk at night. I'm not comfortable sitting out by herself to walk at night. That's just sad in this great city. Uh, I gotta say, I find it difficult understanding the policy that has the city build sidewalks and then turning around and telling the residents, it's your responsibility to keep them up and to fix them and repair them. Seems a little nonsensical to me. There are loads of beautiful homes in District Four and we have the opportunity to empower residents to save these historic homes and the heritage of Waco, the rich history that we have in Waco. That's District Four.
Thank you. Please explain your understanding of the city council's role in the council manager form of government and please, and how you would work hard to govern effectively according to the city charter.
Let's see, we find that one. I'm on the wrong question here in my book.
Number six.
Number six, yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, well, thanks to the Waco City Academy. It is my understanding that the city is a seven hundred million dollar organization with more than thirty different businesses and seventeen hundred employees across twenty-seven departments. Wow. Along with the mayor, the city council sits at the top of the flow chart of leadership. Uh, it's my understanding that the council's responsible for overseeing and working with the city attorney, city manager, uh, who basically operates as the CEO of the city, secretary, Michelle Hicks, as I mentioned, municipal court judge, and by extension, all the departments that flow out of the city manager's office. Along with the mayor, the council determines practical things such as policy, budget, zoning, and overseeing and making sure all of the city team members and departments, how about the need in order to do their jobs at a high level? The council's responsible for casting a vision for the future of Waco and then working with all city government to see that that vision comes to fruition. For example, facilitating an economic development, creating a culture of equity and inclusion, providing a safe and resilient city, improving infrastructure, build a high-performing city government, enhancing quality of life and supporting sustainability, right? The other departments and their employees flow mainly out of the city manager's office. This includes the deputy city manager, assistant city managers, all of whom oversee the various city departments. That's my technical understanding.
Awesome. Thank you. Are you running in the May twenty twenty-three District Four election?
I'm giving serious thought to it. Yeah, serious thought and prayer. I think that if I pointed to the position, it would greatly influence my decision whether or not to run. You know, it'd be really great to experience and say, wow, I love this. "Wow, I love this. This is my fit."
Good. Uh, thank you for your time today. Before we conclude, do you have any additional information regarding your qualifications for this position?
Yeah, I would say I'm a small business owner. Uh, have been for some thirty years. I've traveled, served, and performed in over thirty countries, including behind the Iron Curtain in the eighties and nineties. This allowed me to experience so many amazing things and to observe and learn. I'm a natural leader who brings all of my experience, character and wisdom that I've gained, and love for people to my leadership.
Very good. Um, last question is, do you have any questions for us?
Not at this time. I, I'll just say that I really appreciate what you guys are doing, like seeing it and having gone through the City Academy, the Waco City Academy, uh, seeing the things that you guys are about has really been inspirational. And if I were wholeheartedly opposed to what you guys were doing and where you were moving, I obviously would not be interested in the position. But, uh, I look forward to the opportunity, whether it's this or another, to serve and to be in governmental leadership with you guys, so.
Well, thank you so much, um, and for your willingness to serve. Um, Rory, I, I just gotta say that we're so appreciative of your willingness to serve your community. Uh, as I mentioned a few moments ago, this is going to be a really hard decision for us because there's a lot of good folks who are throwing their names in the hat for this. Um, and so all we can say is thank you so much for doing so.
Thank you, guys. Have a great morning.
Thank you. And we're running a little bit ahead of schedule here, but, um, if we want to keep moving, Mr. Horner? Morning.
Morning.
Good. And, uh, what, uh, what the drill is here, Mr. Horner, is, uh, you can open it up with a presentation, um, explaining, uh, your, um, why, why you want to fill this seat, and then from there we'll shift and I'll ask you some questions.
Okay, great. Uh, first of all, let me say that I appreciate the work that y'all have done, and I think y'all are awesome in, uh, where we are and where your vision is for the city. And my intention is, um, to support that if you appoint me. Uh, with that said, I would like to give you a little background that I think will speak to why I would be a good candidate to fill this position. First of all, I've lived in Waco since 1967. I've lived in District Four since 1984. I have, um, I love that Waco and District Four particularly is a diverse ci- uh, diverse city. Twenty-one percent African-American, thirty-one percent Hispanic, and forty-four percent white. This is a huge strength for us that we need to try to capitalize on and continue to capitalize on. Uh, I love that the citizens of Waco and, uh, the council in particular is, uh, caring, generous, and civil to one another. I think that's an important characteristic for us to be the best that we could be. The, uh, finally, I think I'm well-prepared, and I, my history will, I believe, attest to that. And if you'll indulge me, I'll give you some background. The, uh, I was born in Uvalde, Texas. I moved to Waco in 1967 to attend Baylor University. I had stayed. And I'm married to Carol Todd Horner. I have three children, Amanda Horner, Todd Horner, and Abigail Boni. When I moved to Waco in sixty-seven, it was to attend Baylor. And I got a degree, a BBA in 1971, an MBA in 1973, and I attained a license as a certified public accountant. Professionally, I started my career at the Citizens National Bank of Waco in 1970 and stayed there, stayed at, at 514 Austin Avenue for thirty years. I think it was like seven different bank names, and it made the sign people in Waco wealthy. Because it seemed like we changed a lot. But, uh, through that time, I had several different jobs at the bank. But it, a couple of them that I'll share with you is that I was chairman of the board and CEO when we were First Republic, and I became the regional manager of the Central Texas District when we became, um, Bank of America. And that included overseeing banking operations in banks in Ennis, Corsicana, Waco, uh, Kerrville, uh, to mention a few. So after my banking career, I went to work for a nonprofit, Brazis Higher Education Service Corporation. I served as an executive over there. And as towards the end of that time, I was part of the Brazis Education Foundation, and we raised money to give scholarships to, um, high school seniors. And that was a very rewarding thing for me. I have, throughout my career, I've been lucky to work with people and for people that recognized giving back to the community was, uh, very important. Uh, Mr. Lacy was the first to encourage me to get involved in community activities, and I did so. And if you'll indulge me on that, I'm going to talk about a few of the things I've done. It's, raise your hand when you want me to stop. The, uh, there's no particular ranking as timeframe or importance or whatever. They were all important to me and all opportunities to give back to the community. But here's a few. I was director of the Waco Foundation. I was director of the TSTC Regent Circle. I served as president of the Waco Industrial Foundation. I was on the Board of Directors and president of the Waco Business League. I was chairman of the Greater Waco Chamber of Commerce. I was the first chairman of the Tax Increment Financing District, number one. Uh, and let me tell you, that bears no resemblance to what it became, but it was a wonderful experience, and it's so great to look back and, and see where that has taken this community. The, uh, I was a, a member of the Waco ISD Adopt a School Steering Committee. I was a director of the McClennan Community Colleges, uh, Foundation. I was on the board of the Texas Bankers Association. I served as campaign director and president of the United Way. I was the president of the Central Texas Chapter of Certified Public Accountants. I was a treasurer of the Zoological Society. And I was on the Earl Harrison Museum Board. In every one of these instances, I made decisions on what I thought was best for the citizens of Waco and the organizations that I was serving from. I made many valuable contacts and learned many valuable lessons in every single one of those, uh, instances that I served. If appointed, I will do the same thing as a city council member. And with that said, again, I want to compliment you on where you are taking and leading this city. And I, if appointed, I would do nothing but be very supportive of those efforts.
Thank you. All right, we'll ask you some questions now. The first one is, did you vote in the last election for District Four?
I did.
Thank you. How do you see your role on the Waco City Council? And what do you hope to accomplish as a city council member?
The, uh, basically to support what you've been doing and make sure that we, uh, continue in that direction until the next election.
What do you see as the opportunities and challenges facing our city?
Uh, I think the opportunities that we have is to enhance the long-time partnerships that we have. And again, uh, I think y'all are doing a good, great job of that, and it's come a long way. The partnership with the county, uh, with educational institutions in the area, uh, with all the surrounding communities, the regulatory authorities. I just think that's a huge thing that we need to continue to, to, to do. And, and I think there are opportunities to improve, and improve the situations for the, uh, our citizens and to provide ever-increasing services. But the, the big challenge, I think, is to maintain the high quality of what we have and not to, not to slip on any of the areas, uh, that we, we have attained, really good levels that support the citizens.
Thank you. What do you see as the opportunities and challenges facing District Four, if different from the city?
I think primarily they are the same. Uh, District Four has, it's kind of a, to, to me, the heart or part of the heart of the city, and as such, it has older properties. We need to continue with our efforts for redevelopment and support in District Four, but it's not unlike the rest of the city. And I, I'd like to emphasize that the main things that I see the city that does for the citizens is make sure we have water, and it's, that's certainly been a challenge and will continue to be. The infrastructure needs to be constantly updated. I think the city is, is doing a great job on that. I would hope that there are ways that we can, uh, improve the infrastructure so that the age of what we have doesn't continue to cause, uh, problems. It's particularly evident to me in the, um, in the water issues. There have lots of water leaks all over. Again, the city does a good job of getting those fixed, but I would like to see an opportunity somehow to, that we don't ha- continue to have those, if, if possible. And then, uh, affordable housing, I think, is an issue. And we need to continue to look for opportunities to, to do that. And then the last thing I would say is, um, we need to encourage participation by all, all citizens, whatever their economic status, their ethnicity. Uh, we need to find opportunities for everybody to participate so that we can have a shared vision for the whole community.
Thank you. Tell us what you think you bring to the position that others may not. Please provide examples of volunteer opportunities or services that you've provided to the community.
The, I think what I bring, I've already mentioned, is experience. Forty-five years of, um, business experience, including thirty years in the banking industry and, uh, the balance and not-for-profits. And in all those years, I've been privileged to, uh, to serve the community in many leadership positions that has, um, lived a lot of, uh, experience that I can bring to bear with the city, uh, this position. And if, I think I have more things that I could, could list, but I don't think that should be necessary. Uh, and I'm pr- I have been proud to serve in many professional and volunteer positions that I think lend the expertise to help the city.
Thank you. Please under, uh, explain your understanding of the city council's role in a council-manager form of government, and how would you work to govern effectively according to the city charter?
The, uh, my understanding of the city council is that they're the legislative part of the, um, city government. And as such, they set policies, approve budgets, and those types of things. They also hire the city manager and city secretary and the city attorney and the municipal judge, I believe. But at any rate, uh, those people, particularly the city manager, are in charge of the actual implementation and oversight for all the activities of the city. So as such, um, although it, I'm sure it's tempting sometimes to give direction to some of the city, um, managers and such as the, maybe the police chief or the fire chief or somebody like that. It is, uh, that is not the purpose of the, uh, city council. That is the job of the city manager. And I think that, uh, that is one thing that I would be very careful with, to make sure that if I need to get some direction, that it goes through the mayor and the city manager and the rest of the city council in, uh, getting it out and being implemented in the community.
Thank you. Are you running in the May 2023 District Four election?
I am not. And I, um, I do not intend to, and I am, I'm simply volunteering my time and experience to assist you in what you have, uh, been doing and add anything I might be able to add. I am not running for election to this office, but I would be proud to serve, um, till the citizens of District Four can go through a whole election process and choose who they want to represent them.
Thank you. Before we conclude, do you have any additional information regarding your qualifications for this position? I feel like this is the fourth time we've asked you that, but, uh...
Uh, the only thing I might like to add, and I think it speaks to my commitment, uh, to the things that I'm involved in, is that, uh, when my daughter was three years old, I started teaching Sunday School. And she's forty-five, and I still work in children's Sunday School every Sunday. And I bring that kind of commitment with any job that I might accept. And I appreciate your consideration. I appreciate, again, all the work that y'all have been doing, and I look forward, as selected, to working with each of you.
Last question, Mr. Horner, do you have any questions of us?
Not, well, I do have one. When will you, uh, make this, uh, decision?
We anticipate making the decision, uh, today, this afternoon.
Good work, as I would have all expected. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much for your, your willingness to serve, David. It, it really means so much to us. We so appreciate your sincere willingness to serve your community. This is going to be an incredibly difficult decision for us. There's some, uh, really qualified, competent applicants that have thrown their name in the ring, and I don't relish making this decision. In fact, usually as these days go on, I get more and more sick over having to decide something like this. But I just really appreciate you so much. So all we can say is thank you.
Well, thank you, and again, I appreciate y'all's good work.
Thanks, sir.
Mayor, if I might, uh, just want to remind you the decision's going to be made on the seventeenth.
Oh, correct, sorry about that. I, I apologize for that, thank you. Um, next we have, um, Anthony Johnson on our, um, list. Is he, is Mr. Johnson here yet?
Not, he's not here yet, Mayor.
We're running early, so we'll take a recess until his arrival. Uh, reconvene from a recess, uh, at nine forty-seven PM. And the next on, uh, the next applicant on our interview schedule is Mr. Anthony Johnson. So if you just come down and have a seat at the table with the microphone, uh, you can begin, uh, with a three-to-five-minute presentation explaining, uh, why you're seeking this position. And then, um, afterwards, I'll ask you some questions on behalf of the council. Floor's yours.
Floor's mine, all right. Well, hey, welcome, guys. Good to be here. Jim, good to see you, Josh, Mayor, Alice, and Andrea. Uh, my name's Anthony Johnson. Uh, I don't really have a PowerPoint or, uh, charts or graphs or anything. I'll just give you a gr-... I'll just give you a brief background of who I am. And I know you guys know me, but you don't know my background and my story. So the story of our family goes back to nineteen seventy-four. My mom and dad moved here. My dad was a professor in the Business School of Baylor University for forty-five years and bought a house at Twenty-Ninth and Sanger. We still have that house in our family today. I grew up, I was born actually nineteen eighty at Hillcrest Hospital in District Four, the old Hillcrest Hospital. I grew up there at Twenty-Ninth and Sanger, grew up on the streets playing. We lived on the creek, I believe it was Waco Creek. We played along the creek. We were in Brookview neighborhood, Sanger Heights neighborhood, and went to elementary school in Provinna Heights in District Four. My mom was a teacher for WISD. She taught at Provinna Heights for about fifteen years. Went on to Waco High, graduated there in nineteen ninety-eight in District Four and went on to Baylor, got my degree and then got into real estate and became a Realtor. I'm now with Bentonwood Realty. Been there for about, I guess, be nine years this spring. So, yeah, so I primarily, a lot of my business is in District Four and in the city of Waco. If you look at recent history, I sold about a dozen properties in my district. I'm a city kid. I love the city of Waco. It's my niche. I like selling it within the confines of my city. I have a passion for my city. I have done numerous volunteer activities within my city. I'm a member of First Baptist Church downtown Waco. I'm the president, or former president of the Lake Brazos Rotary Club. Several of y'all have been speakers, Josh and Jim. Jim, I think you were my first speaker when I was president, when you talked about your trip down Mississippi River, if you remember that, about five, six years ago. So I'm Waco through and through. I would love to sell houses out in Hidden Valley and things like that, but I won't turn them down. But the majority of what I do is in my city. All my volunteer activity, everything is for the love of my city. So I thought this would be a great opportunity when this position came open to apply for it. And so I appreciate you guys for giving me an opportunity to visit with you and get to know me, so.
Thanks so much for that. I'll begin with the questions now. The first question is, did you vote in the last municipal election for District Four?
My father passed away May fourth, twenty twenty-one. He had idiopathic pulmonary fibrosis, a very debilitating disease. I really helped my mom caretake for him almost a year. And so I'm with her, taking care of him, and then he passed May fourth. Of course, that's right around the time of the vote for that twenty twenty-one election. The funeral was May eleventh. We had family in town and of course, it was just a lot going on. I was not able to, I have in the past. John Kennard, who was actually a former client of mine, who was District Four representative. I have voted in the past for City Council, but this past election, because of my dad's death and everything that went on with that, I was not able to.
Thank you. And I'm sorry about your loss.
Thank you. Well, I'm kind of here too because of him. My dad was very active in the community, many boards. I remember as a kid watching the City Council with him, although I wanted to watch ESPN. But yeah, he's a big reason why I'm involved in my community and giving back.
Thanks for sharing that. Next question is, how do you see your role on the Waco City Council and what do you hope to accomplish as a City Council member?
Yeah, I think, you know, you're representative of your city and your community, first and foremost. You're also a liaison to your district. I'm the person that people reach out to where they have questions about infrastructure. They have questions about, you know, crime, you know, kind of small business issues, anything like that, that I am the person they reach out to. And a lot of times you get a lot of complaints, which, you know, that's part of the job. But yeah, that's basically what I would see myself. And then for the city of Waco, you know, I want every, I want every part of this city to be the good side of town. I heard a mayor say that one time about his city. And that's kind of what I want for Waco. I want every part of this community to be the good side of town.
Thank you. What do you see as the opportunities and challenges facing our city?
Yeah, I thought about that. I think, you know, Waco's always been a manufacturing community. Mainly that was kind of what our economy was tailored towards. I think there's a lot more opportunity for manufacturing. I think a lot of our manufacturing is now coming back to the United States. And I think we're at a good place in the state as far as geography for that. I think, you know, I think we can build on our, you know, more of what SpaceX is doing, more space technologies, become more of a space hub, I guess you would say. I think that's something that's, can really be tapped into. I think we're only in the beginning stages, a lot of that. So I think there's a lot of opportunity in that field. You know, I think, and I wrote some of this other stuff down. I think, you know, we also, you know, I think we have the tourism thing down. I think that's been taken care of, so I think we're really good there. We can always, you know, of course, add more to that. But yeah, and I'm speaking from a business perspective because I'm an entrepreneur. So I think the opportunity is lying with those two.
Very good, thank you. What are the opportunities and challenges facing District Four if any different from the city?
Well, I'd still like to see more people move into District Four. I mean, I think we got a lot of homes that can be repaired and fixed up and be lived. And I, you know, I love my neighborhoods. I want people to move in there and enjoy it as much as I do. I think that's a great opportunity for, I drive around our district all the time and I still see a lot of lots, I still see a lot of vacant homes. So I'm here to tell everybody to come, come look at District Four, move back in the city. I mean, I love the country, but I'm a city kid. I like building relationships with my neighbors and I like being near people, like being kind of the center of the action. So I think there's opportunity for District Four. Absolutely.
Next question is, tell us what you bring to the position that others may not and please provide examples of volunteer opportunities or services that you've provided in the community.
You know, I've been involved ever since I've been in real estate in my community. Like I mentioned, I was still a member of Lake Brazos Rotary Club. I was a former president, I've been a board member of that club. Was on, very active in the Waco Chamber of Commerce. I was an ambassador where we welcome new members. We would go to their ribbon cuttings, have a ribbon cutting and a ceremony for them to welcome them to be new members of the chamber. I was on the new welcoming committee where we would meet one-on-one or, excuse me, as a group with new chamber members. You know, I'm very active in First Baptist Church. I'm on the Building Grounds Committee. We do a lot of neighborhood ministry within, just around the neighborhood of First Baptist. So I, you know, I invest a lot of my time in my community in Waco and not just District Four, but other districts, whether it's Alice's district or, you know, Andrea's district as well. And yeah, so I feel like just the time invested and everything that I've done has kind of, I would say, put me out in front of other candidates applying for this job. And I do know some of the other candidates and they're very, very good people and do a lot of good work. But I feel like just, I've done a lot, a lot in my, I'm forty-two years old. So I pretty much have been involved, invested in the city since I was a kid, so.
Thank you. Please explain your understanding of the City Council's role in council manager, in the council manager form of government and how you'd work to govern effectively according to our city charter?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, my dad was a professor and very involved in Baylor in the academic setting. I think it's similar to that in the sense that you have a president and a provost who kind of set day-to-day operations, kind of run everyday operations. And then, so that translates to city manager, same thing, does a lot of the day-to-day operations within the city. And then any kind of big capital expenditure, like in an academic setting, you put in front of the board or the City Council, the City Council votes on it. I think an effective, the best way is to, you know, be in communication, obviously, with the City Council and the manager. Also, you, you know, you need time to look it over, you need to look over what these, you know, whatever the capital expenditure is, you need time to look at it, you know, review it, you know, ask questions. So I think communication and time is probably, is to me, the best way to have an effective city government.
Thank you. Are you running in the May twenty twenty-three District Four election?
Well, if you say yes, absolutely, if you vote me in. You know, I feel strongly about this, I really do. This is a great timing for me. I feel really motivated to really get involved in my community in this manner. And of course, I've been involved in other ways, but I feel like city government now is an opportunity for me. I haven't decided a hundred percent yet, but I'm really, really contemplating it without question. I know that's kind of a, not a direct answer, but I haven't decided yet.
Great, thank you.
But yes, if you'd say yes, so.
Sure, thank you. Thank you for your time today. Before we conclude, do you have any additional information regarding your qualifications for this position that you'd like to share?
You know, I think I pretty much have said it all. I just want to say the Johnson family has been part of District Four for almost fifty years. And I also did not mention, my brother was also lived in District Four. He led the Forty-Second and Morrow and was former president of Brookview Neighborhood Association. My mom was on the board as well. I've been a member. I mean, we're Waco. I mean, we love this community, we love this city. I mean, we back in any way we can. And I feel like this is an opportunity for our family to continue doing that, so.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Last question, do you have any questions for us?
Nothing I can think of.
Great.
Nothing I can think of.
Well.
I just appreciate you guys for your work and your service. It's not easy. I think, you know, I've had my complaints about, you know, the road construction, all that. So I know you guys have taken a lot of heat for a lot of things and I just have most respect for you guys and your service. And I'd love to join you guys and be a part of this and appreciate your vote.
Anthony, I just thank you so much for your willingness to serve. It's not lost on us that you sincerely love your community and we see that. It's an incredibly difficult decision for all of us.
Absolutely. I mean, there's great candidates, I know several of them. If you guys don't pick me, I hope there's a few on there I would really love for us, for y'all, for to represent District Four. So I like it to be me, but there's other good candidates, so.
Well, we don't relish it, but certainly appreciate you throwing your name in the ring and appreciate your thoughtfulness to responding today and the qualifications that you bring to bear. So all we can say is thank you and appreciate you.
Well, thank y'all, appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Have a good day.
Thanks, Anthony.
And I don't see Miss Hinahosa here, so we will, again, recess until her arrival. Given that we're thirty minutes early, we might have a little bit of time. Oh, Emily is here, so we will go ahead and, that's great. We'll just wait a few moments and then we are running ahead of schedule today, so you can come on up to the table right here and the mic. And as I hope has been explained, you have a moment to give a three to five minute presentation on your candidacy to fill this seat and then we'll ask you some questions.
Emily Hinahosa, I'm glad I was early, nice to see you. Or on time.
You are. No, you are thirty minutes early. We are running thirty minutes ahead of schedule, so you're definitely early.
So why I'm a candidate for this appointment? I have lived in this district for almost ten years. I can't imagine living anywhere else in Waco. There are great places, but this has been home for me for a decade. Originally, when I first moved here, lived in Sanger Heights on Fifteenth Street, then in Brookview, which at the time, I don't think was actually part of District Four, but now is. And then, and now in Dean Highland. And so I would say that this is not, and I know this is not the question that we're talking about, but this is not really the time for me to run a full campaign or a full election in my life. My, I think there are other things that I'm committed to for the next five to ten years, but I think long-term, this could be something I'm really interested in. I think in some ways that makes me a good candidate because I am interested in learning the role. I bring with me relationships in the district, some experience working with the neighborhood associations, each one in each of those neighborhoods. I served hot dogs at Halloween on Coal Court. I've participated in the Brookview Neighborhood Association and then somewhat, you know, unintentionally became the president of the Dean Highland Restart of the Neighborhood Association. We could blame Milet for that. She said, oh, you live there. And I said, oh, no, this is, this means something. And I, you know, I think there are people in Waco that have more time and more capacity, but I brought something particular to that neighborhood association at a particular time. And I think that experience gave me a bit of a microcosm of what you do, certainly not the full picture, but I think interfacing with a number of city staff members from public works to parks to streets to police, I mean, you name it. Jim Reed had an hour conversation with me, lovely conversation. I think I have a sense of how things work here and I would be available to fill the position. So again, there are a lot of great options that y'all have, so.
Thank you for that and we'll begin with some questions. All right, the first question is, did you vote in the last municipal election for District Four? Thank you. All right, next question is, how do you see your role on the Waco City Council and what would you hope to accomplish as a City Council member?
I think I would delineate between an appointed City Council member and an elected City Council member. I think there's what, seven to eight meetings of which I would participate, read, vote, be a part of this team. And I would take that very seriously. But I also think in terms of agenda setting, there's been a budget set, there's been an agenda set, there's been ambitious development efforts. And what I would bring to this interim, short-term period is a sense of that landscape, a sense of what's happening and where across the city. I worked briefly as a Director of Research and Community Impact at Prosper Waco. And so part of my role was to really know what was happening in Waco, for whom things were going well, for whom they were not, what were the intentions and plans of the community and looking for ways that those things fit together. So my kind of personal background and my professional experience, I think, bring me to a place where, what I would want to accomplish is keep things moving, keep things in the air and vote as a representative of the district, having lived there, having been a part of the community and really caring. I'm not sure I would see myself as setting any big agendas. That's a lot, that's a lot to accomplish in a seven to eight week meeting time. But I would say one thing I do bring to the table is perspective on consequences, intended consequences, unintended consequences of decisions. And so I think one of the things I would bring to this team is that perspective, not just for my district, but a perspective on, we pull this, this happens. I have a background of a PhD in sociology and I've done a lot of social research. And so would be really excited to bring that to bear.
Thank you. Next question is, what do you see as the opportunities and challenges facing our entire city?
It's not a big question. You know, I think there's some obvious ones here and I'd frame it as an opportunity. There's a lot of ambitions, plans in this city, in this past decade that I've been here. I think Waco's changed dramatically and I think that it's almost as if it's just beginning some of that. So in, I have very little background in economic development, but what I would say is that with fast growth come all kinds of challenges and those are experienced differently by different people. And so one of the challenges is knowing that, owning that, attending to that, those differential experiences of that growth and change and honoring that, which I think everyone here is trying to do. I would also say, and this is I would also say, and this is, this is maybe more of a, it's like, that's kind of a structural thing, I think another challenge, and this is, I mean, my perspective is that depending on who you ask, the challenges are different, right? And that, the nature of, of Waco in this moment is that, and I mean, today starts the legislative session in Austin, depending on who you ask, you have a different experience. And I am personally curious to say how we pursue e pluribus unum, how we do this together, out of many, one, what does it mean to be a place and people that work together on things, and that we don't leave anyone behind, regardless of where you live. So I think that's kind of a summary of, you know, how we, how we grow together and how in that process, we don't leave people behind. Again, none of that's, that's rocket science for this group, but I'm particularly attentive to those things, especially having, again, you know, I think neighbor, neighbor associations are kind of a funny thing, and I, I, I was very clear when, when I, I was pursued or I was asked to be the person, I said, "I'm not your person to have cookouts or block parties," or, but, but what I can do is look for commonalities and common ground and find ways to move forward together, and I think that that's something I would bring to the district, for sure.
Thank you so much. Next question is, is kind of similar. What do you see, and you might have answered it even, what do you see as opportunities and challenges facing District Four, if any different from the city?
I think those would be relevant, those two, but more practically speaking, there have been some really exciting developments in District Four, so Lyons Park, I think of the 25th Street Fire Station, there are a number of things that are happening, kind of popping up. And I had shared this once at a neighborhood leaders network, but I, I kind of talked, I said, "You know, it would be great as if..." And I think this has happened to some extent in the Imagine Waco effort, and especially I've seen some of it at Coal Court and 15th, in terms of place-based development, right? Where you're thinking of a particular small corridor, what's happening almost out. I think there's a lot of opportunity for that kind of approach in District Four. It's highly residential, but there's also a number of, let's say, third space opportunities and connectivity opportunities. So one I would say that, that jumps out at me is we have a new Waco high school that's being built, and I think as someone who lives nearby, the amount of children who walk across New Road, from Brookview as well, from Dean Highland, Sanger Heights, from even all the way over on Herring, is astounding every day, they're walking through grass and crossing a road without crosswalks. So I think that's an example of, of some opportunities, where there's construction, where there's things happening, how do we make those connection points? And as someone who's lived in a number of these neighborhoods, I see those, and again, those are opportunities, so.
Very good. Thank you. Next question, tell us what you think you bring to the position that others may not, and please provide examples of volunteer opportunities or services you've provided in the community.
So one thing that I bring, and I, I don't know that I would have, I don't think I realized that I brought this, but, I mean, I've talked about the neighborhood association because I think it's, it's relevant, but the, but what I'll talk about here is the, the way in which I approach some of that. So there are a number of, two things I would say is I bring an ability to get along with people that I disagree with or don't necessarily agree with. We have a number of people in our neighborhood, and rightfully so, we're concerned about crime. 2022, we had some 21 increase in crime rates, and so we brought in community engagement team, Waco Police to speak. I was more concerned about stray dogs, other people, so we'll bring in the community engagement team. That's for a different discussion. But we're talking about crime rates, and I, I know statistics, and so we're looking through the, the crime reports, and it, as we were kind of talking through these as a group with our community engagement team with the police department, one thing that emerged is that any of the crimes that did not have a geolocation, so whether that's identity theft, or someone calls it, this isn't a geography, but this is something that happened, were getting coded as Dean Highland because of where the police station is located. And so I asked questions about that, and we were able to work both with the neighborhood engagement team and the community engagement team with the police to change that. And so I, single-handedly, reduced crime in Dean Highland. But I significantly out. But, but I say, what I, what I, in that, I give that example because I knew who to call, I, I saw, I listened to the constituents that had a concern that I necessarily didn't share, I didn't necessarily should share, and we found a solution that was more about communication than it was about deploying resources towards a non-existent problem. Or a, the problem was different then, or maybe wasn't as bad as one thought. So I think that it's triangulating ideas, institutions, individuals, people, knowing the landscape of who to call at the city, having worked with a number of departments that I, that I brought to bat, and everyone was pretty happy with that. So I, I bring that awareness of both issues, people, and institutions. And in that, I would say even personally, I really wanted to bring these things together. I didn't feel like I was advocating for one over the other. I saw a possibility of saying, "Hey, everyone, look what the city of Waco is doing for." I thought, "Why am I saying that?" You know, but I, but I saw the possibility of bringing these things together, and I think I would do that naturally in District Four.
Very good. Next question is, please explain your understanding of the city council's role in a council manager form of government, and how you would work to govern effectively according to our city charter.
So I think, as I understand it, this governing body is kind of the final arbiter and decision-makers, and yet there's this dance, I would say, with the city managers and city staff who are setting agendas and, and really deriving a number of, of opportunities, in part because of knowledge and capacity, but that's in conversation, and in regular conversation. I think we all know different things, and so I would envision that that works as a partnership and kind of regular communication about, here's what I'm seeing, great idea, but what about this? And kind of always talking about consequences, unintended consequences, perspectives of people, and moving things along, if that helps.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Next is, are you running in the May 2023 District Four election?
I am not. It's a popular question. I've gotten asked this quite a bit, and I am not, this is not, I have a number of commitments that would keep me from that, but as I said earlier, I could totally see this in 10 years, in 15, and, you know, by then it might be too late to know if I am good at it, or if the people think I'm good at it, and so this, this would, so the answer is no, I'm not running.
Good. Thank you. And thank you for your time today. Before we conclude, do you have any additional information regarding your qualifications for this position?
Less about qualifications and more about approach. Well, one thing I would say, I don't have any social media, so in terms of communication with constituents, I think I would, you know, it would be old school in that way. I don't know that there's a peer model out there. I think when I listen to these city council meetings, because of course, people listen to city council meetings, I am struck by the desire to solve complex challenges, address them, and to do so with integrity. I'm comfortable with ambiguity and with not, with, with knowing that every decision has consequences, both good and bad, and, and so what I would bring is that humility to the situation and desire to, to serve during this time. So I don't, I think just qualifications would be administrative experience, experience working with community nonprofits, knowledge of Waco as a whole in terms of both, let's say qualitatively and quantitatively. And I would be a quick, I think because of that, I would learn quickly. I would be, catching me up to speed would not take very long on some of the agenda items, so.
Good.
That's it.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Last question, do you have any questions for us?
So what, what's your kind of timeline on this decision?
Yeah, so I, I was mistaken earlier when asked this. So we will make a decision on, at the January 17th meeting, is that correct? Okay. So we will make a decision at the January 17th meeting, the, the decision will be made then, I mean, and then the swearing in for this position will be at the first February meeting, is that correct?
We actually have it scheduled for the 17th as well.
The 17th as well. Okay, thank you. So good to get clarity as we go.
Yeah, right. The train is moving.
The train is moving.
I think, one, yeah, one question I would have, and if, assuming we have time, is what appointment, we've had a lot of appointments in the city's council in recent years, what is the kind of nuance? I mean, I see some nuance in terms of the difference between an appointment and elected. People wouldn't, people are not making this decision, maybe you're making this decision, and so what, what is required of this person? Councilmember Palmer brought some specific things to this group, what, what's needed, I think, in this moment?
I'm happy to field that unless, but I would love someone on council to field that question, if someone has an idea, maybe one person, anybody?
Go ahead, Dylan.
You know, I think that's, that's a really challenging question for just one person to answer, I think, because it is, it is really hard. There's so, so much, as, you know, we made almost two questions in this interview, is what are the needs and opportunities in this community? There's, there's great needs and opportunities. So I would say the biggest, you know, one of the things that we, we have high value for is a teamsmanship mentality, and at the same time, a thoughtfulness to representing the needs of the district and having that low ear to the ground and being able to report. So I think that that's a couple of the things that, from my perspective, have a high value of this council and the, the community right now. Any other questions?
That's it.
Well, I can't tell you how much we appreciate you and your willingness to serve. It's obvious, it's very sincere in that you love your community. This is an incredibly difficult decision for us, it's definitely one I don't relish making because there's so many qualified, kind and competent applicants who have thrown their name in the ring. But all I can say is thanks so much, and we really sincerely appreciate your commitment to our community and our city and for participating in this process.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Emily.
And Chris is not here yet, so we, the next applicant is Chris Matthews, and he's not here yet, so we will take a recess until his arrival. He will re-adjourn from our recess at 10:34 a.m. Mr. Matthews, we are running very early, but if you'd like to, you can come on up and have a seat at this table in front of the microphone, because I think he's been presented to you, you'll be given the opportunity to give a three to five minute presentation explaining why you're running for this role, and then we'll move to some questions that I'll ask of you, and they're identical questions than what we've asked so far.
Great, sounds great. My name's Chris Matthews, and I'm here to, possibly, is that for the vacant, as the first position? I'm not from Waco originally, I'm actually from the south side of Houston, the Clear Lake area. After graduating from high school, I enrolled in the Eastern Airlines Pilot Entry Program, was studying to be an airline pilot, I was pursuing that, but unfortunately, Eastern Airlines won a business, and I continued my flight training in and around the Houston area for a few years, until one day, when I'm flipping through an aviation magazine, there was a full-page ad from Baylor advertising their brand-new, at that time, aviation program that was a four-year degree at Baylor, which happened to be at the time, the only four-year degree in aviation that you could get in the state of Texas. So I was really excited, came to Baylor immediately after that, and arrived exactly 30 years ago this month to enroll in Baylor's aviation program. Honestly, I didn't know what to think about Waco. I didn't know anything about Waco. I came to go to Baylor, and my intention was to graduate and skedaddle out as fast as possible, so I just wasn't really paying much attention to the city at that point. I was young, you know.
Forgetting for that.
Anyway, things change. A couple months after arriving at Baylor, I met this wonderful girl, Warren, and she just kind of swept me off my feet, and eight months later, we were married. So here we are, we're still undergraduate students at Baylor, married, you know, living near campus, renting what considered, we considered to be astronomical, paying astronomical rent prices, and we decided that I didn't like that situation. So we decided we wanted to try to buy something, if we could find something that we could afford. We were just poor college students, I was working as a student worker in the Baylor Budget Office, and she was, had a small stipend for her research in physics that she was pursuing at the time. And we scraped our pennies together and looked around for places that we might be able to afford near the university, and we had to X the homes, we couldn't afford those homes, they were just way too expensive. But we did found, find out in the process that there was condominiums that were available near the university, that were, that were affordable, that was a possibility for someone of our means at the time. So we scraped our pennies together and clipped our coupons, and she even cut my hair for a while. And we scraped up enough money for a down payment for a small condo near the university, and we purchased that condo and to live in for ourselves. But in the process of doing all that, I discovered that there was an opportunity that I had never even explored or reconsidered prior to that, which was that homeownership is a unique situation where you could rent the same property for $600 or $700, which is what we were paying at the time, you could buy that same property for like $200 a month. Well, I didn't need a Harvard MBA to figure out the difference between 200 and 700 was a profit. And so what we did, after we purchased that initial unit for ourselves, we were able to stash away the money that we had previously been going toward rent, that we've been paying toward, toward a landlord, to save up money for additional units. So we saved up that money, again, continued to pinch our pennies, and were able to afford a down payment on additional unit, and then another unit, all these units cash flowed at the time, they were very reasonable at the time, this is early 90s, '93 to be exact, and before I graduated from Baylor, I'd already purchased over 20 units. I was excited about the possibilities in Waco at that, by that point in time. I've always said that people, sometimes they arrive in Waco, or no one ever arrives in Waco and says, "Wow, Waco." Or at least not, or at least they didn't in 1993, put it that way. But I feel like, and I've always felt like, if something brings you here, and you're forced to kind of stay here for a while, there's a subtle charm to Waco, and it kind of grows on you. And by that point in time, when we were working on our, my, on my master's degree and her on her PhD, you know, wake, that, that charm had started to grow on us, and we decided that if possible, if we could find a way to make a living in, in Waco, Texas, that we would choose to stay. Well, that precipitated me having to give up my flying career, there was very few aviation opportunities in Waco, Texas, and I did not want to commute to Austin or Dallas and live that kind of family life. So I decided I'd just kind of ramp up my rental property and real estate investing career, and she would pursue a job in physics. So she had gotten her PhD in physics and had initially worked at what was in Raytheon, which is L3 now, and, and eventually got a position in the physics department, and now she's the chair of the physics department at Baylor University now. So meanwhile, we're sitting at home one day, and we're watching, of all things, HGTV, and this is way before Macmillan, and there was another show on HGTV, and it was called "Lofty Ideas." And the, the premise of this show was it followed different people all the way over the United States that were going into old industrial and commercial areas and converting them into homes. They were converting missile silos into homes, schools into homes, old abandoned fire stations into homes, anything you could think of, they were turning it into a home, and it just blew my mind. And I was like, "Oh, my goodness, there's all those buildings in downtown Waco, and they're all vacant, nobody wants them." And those, any one of those could be a home. So I checked into it, turned out they were already zoned by the city, the city had had the foresight to zone those in such a way where you could live on any floor but the ground floor, and so it didn't take any special permission to do so. I bought a building in District Four on the corner of 8th and Austin, and we converted the upstairs of that into our home that we have lived in for the last 18 years. My four children were born in that home, and they, I've... My four children were born in that home, and I've raised them there all this time. My twins, which are seniors at Liveo Classical Downtown, will actually be attending fall, Baylor in the fall themselves. My other children are still younger and still planning to also attend Baylor at some point. I'm just so excited about the possibilities in Waco. I think there's so much promise here, and if we can work together as a city, and I feel, as I feel like we always have, we can continue to do so. And I'm ready to answer your questions now.
Very good, thanks for that. Fun to hear your story.
Yeah.
First question is, did you vote in the last municipal election for District Four?
I vote in almost all elections, honestly, so I think it's very important for some.
How do you see your role on the Waco City Council, and what do you hope to accomplish as a city council member?
I think the role of anyone in politics is to, first of all, listen, you know? Listen to your constituents, listen to your, you know, the city staff, listen to your city manager, listen to what people's needs are, and come to consensus to work together for the betterment of all.
Very good. What do you see as the opportunities and challenges facing our city?
Ooh, opportunities and challenges. I think Waco is, can benefit from the mistakes other cities have made, you know? There's a lot of cities in Texas and around the country, for that matter, who have already grown and have already prospered and already made a lot of mistakes. We don't have to make those same mistakes. We can learn from their mistakes and move forward in a better way and do it better.
Very good. What do you see as opportunities and challenges facing District Four, if different from the city?
District Four is sort of unique. Like I said, having lived there and run my business, the Palladium out of there for all these years, I have sort of a, what I consider to be a unique perspective on it. I see that part of District Four which encroaches into downtown as sort of a unique area. And I have sort of a unique perspective, living on kind of the border between that and the other districts and downtown in particular. I am optimistic, but also concerned about how Waco and downtown in particular will grow into the near future. I feel that with downtown being hemmed in by Magnolia and Baylor and the river, and then the historic neighborhood of Castle Heights, which I value highly, you know, I feel like there's not a lot of opportunities, or there's lots of opportunities to make a critical mistake and lose something in the process. And I have a particular interest in preserving Castle Heights. I just love that neighborhood. It's one of the first things that I loved about Waco. And I would hate to see, at some point in the future, for downtown to continue to encroach upon that neighborhood and for it to lose its residential quality, which I think is like a crown jewel in Waco's crown, you know? So, I also would like to, if possible, and if given the opportunity, work to move the growth of downtown into that area that's mostly undeveloped or underdeveloped between Franklin and Waco Drive. I think that is the way that Waco needs to grow, in addition to the areas that it's already growing in. So, that would be my particular interest.
Very good. Tell us what you think you bring to the position that others may not, and please provide examples of volunteer opportunities or services that you have provided to the community.
Well, as I mentioned before, I've lived in District Four for eighteen years, raised my family here, I run my business here. I've had the opportunity to interact with so many people in Waco over the years through my business. I mean, literally thousands and thousands of events have happened at the Palladium. I mean, hundreds of thousands of people have come and attended events at my facility, and it's been a pleasure and an honor, honestly, for me, because that's many of these people's most special moments in their life, and I've been a small part of it, and it makes me feel good that I've been part of that. I think that I have a special and unique, you know, position, having been where I am and done what I've done, that most people would not have.
Very good. Please explain your understanding of the city council's role in a council manager form of government, and how you'd work to govern effectively according to the city charter.
I think the city council works in conjunction with the city manager and the city staff to implement things. And basically, it's very important, I think, I think, what did I say here? I said, "The city manager brings experience, competence, and continuity to the process." I mean, a lot of these political positions, they can turn over consistently, but having someone there year after year after year that understands the process and knows how to get things done, I think that's important. So, it's important for people in the council to work together and to work with the city staff and the city manager to get things done.
Very good. Are you running in the May twenty twenty-three District Four election?
Actually, I don't know. I mean, honestly, this is sort of a whim for me. I've never really considered politics, it wasn't really my thing. But I felt like I love Waco, and I love District Four, I love downtown, and I felt like Waco has given so much to me. And if this could, if I could in some way give a little bit back, then it would be money, time well spent. I don't know how this is going to work out. I mean, if you were to select me, and maybe it works out, maybe it doesn't. But it's a nice process, it is an opportunity. It's only like four months, I think, you know, till May, the election, so I mean, we got a possibility to kind of fill this out and see how it works. It works, it works, it doesn't, it doesn't. And it's a small commitment of time with a big possible payout, so.
Last question, or actually, second to last. Thank you for your time today. Before we conclude, do you have any additional information regarding your qualifications for this position?
Not necessarily, I just want to thank you for your consideration, and hopefully you select a candidate that fits your needs, and it all works out for the Bennerman Waco and everyone in general.
Last question, do you have any questions for us?
No.
Well, I just want to thank you so much, Chris, sincerely, for your heart for our city and for your heart for downtown. It is clearly sincere, and we're so appreciative of your willingness to step up and serve your community. It's going to be an incredibly difficult decision for us. There's been a lot of really kind, competent, and qualified applicants who have thrown their name in the ring. In fact, it's really hard, as we go through this list, to continue to see great people, hear from them. So, all we can say is-
Good problem to have.
That's right, it is a good problem, but thank you so much.
You're so welcome. Thank you for all your time.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Chris. Next, we have Joan Suppley, and we're a bit early. We're running ahead of schedule. I know that you're scheduled for eleven thirty, and it is just after ten forty-five, but if you want to come on up, if you're prepared, then feel free to, feel free to come on. Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah.
We would have waited. We know we're running ahead of schedule, and you were-
You guys want to go to lunch, so.
Well, welcome this, to our council chambers this morning. I mean, I hope it's been explained, you'll have three to five minutes to make a presentation. We do have your slides here, and then after that, I will ask you some questions, and that will be all for today. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Well, good morning. Thank you for inviting me in to speak to you all. I'm going to read you a little speech, and then I'm going to go through my slides, and I'm not going to talk about everything that's on the slides, because it would just be too much. I'm going to highlight some things, but let me go ahead and start then. Good morning, Mayor Meeks, council members Bearfield, Rodriguez, Boderude, and Holmes.
If you may, there's a concern, just speaking into the mic so that the TV can pick it up.
I was like, we got to pick you up.
Yeah, we want to make sure people, I so apologize as you're getting started there.
Let me shift right over here.
Thank you so much.
Okay, let me start again, thank you. Good morning, Mayor Meeks, council members Bearfield, Rodriguez, Boderude, and Holmes, and members of the city staff. I'm honored to be here to apply for the open position in District Four. My name is Joan Suppley, and I have been a member of the Waco community for over thirty years. As a chaired tenure professor at Baylor University, I've dedicated my life to educating and mentoring the next generation of leaders. I have taught and inspired students who have gone on to make positive impacts in their professions and communities across the state, country, and the world. Throughout my career, I've been passionate about the issues of social justice, equality, and responsible government. I believe that everyone has the right to be treated with dignity and respect, regardless of their background or circumstances. And I believe that it is the responsibility of those in positions of power to use that power wisely with the well-being of all citizens in mind. As a member of the Waco City Council, I would bring these values to the table. I would work tirelessly to ensure that our community is a place where every person has the opportunity to succeed and thrive. I would listen to the concerns and ideas of my constituents, and I would work to find solutions to the challenges we face. I am committed to being an active and engaged member of this community, and I believe that I have the experience, knowledge, and dedication to be an effective leader for my district on the city council. Thank you for your time, and now I will switch to my presentation. When I considered applying for this position, I thought, what can I bring to the table? And I thought, because I love the series so much, I thought that really I am the Ted Lasso candidate here. I do not have a lot of specific experience with the city of Waco government, although I've been a citizen for a long time. I'm not a lawyer, a social worker, a community organizer, minister, fireman, saloner, funeral parlor operator, or a businessperson. And I put those things in there because you asked that question about the city council manager system. And the city council manager system, of course, evolved because of the political machines. And the people who ran their districts or their wards were usually people who had daily contact with the people in their districts. And the problem was, when they went to the at-large system, was to break that bond. Anyway, I have other talents, as I've said, to bring to the table. I'm a historian, a teacher, a team leader, and a team follower. I'm a quick study, and I do understand the structures and constraints of government. My life experience and education have taken me many places and have taught me many things that will be helpful in serving my community. In my introduction, I just want to say that I come from a very, very long line of public service. My family began their public service on this continent in sixteen eighty-three and have continued to do so to this very day. I worked as a young person with my church, I was a Girl Scout, and also a candy striper, that's not stripper, that's striper. Apparently, that's confusing for many people, so that today they call them auxiliary volunteers. And I did all this in my hometown of Orland, Pennsylvania. My education is extensive. I have a BA in history from Beaver College, which is a local college in Philadelphia. I have an MA in Latin American Studies from Louisiana State University and a PhD in history from the University of Texas. In my professional employment, I have been, I have worked at Old Dominion University in Norfolk, Virginia, and Baylor University since nineteen ninety-two. My qualifications for office, according to the Waco Charter, Article Two, Section Three, is that I am at least twenty-one years old. I'm a citizen and a qualified voter of the state of Texas and the city of Waco for at least twelve months, a taxpayer in the city, and a resident of District Four for at least six months. I hold no other office or employment under the city government. My husband and I moved to Waco in nineteen ninety-two. We rented a house in Sanger Heights, designed by Birch Easterwood, and purchased that house in nineteen ninety-three. We both worked at Baylor University. My husband passed away in two thousand fourteen, but I continue to work at Baylor as Director of the Model Organization of American States. Now, when I turn to my relevant experiences, actually, I have this backwards, okay. I worked with a, my first experience, I think, that has relevance for this job is that I worked with a Puerto Rican Girl Scout troop in Philadelphia. We were getting ready to do volunteer work in, at Camp Alisa Colberg in Puerto Rico, and so we worked with this troop. I got to know that culture a little bit, got a little introduction to the language, decided that I truly liked it, and went on from there. I also have been involved in sports programs. I worked for the city of Baton Rouge Summer Camp Program, and I worked in, with lacrosse programs and soccer programs in Austin, where I became a FIFA-certified referee, which I also used it when I was in Norfolk, Virginia. I haven't refereed in a long time, and glad not to do it, actually. When I came to Waco, I joined the Central Texas Women's Alliance, and we did a lot of work with the local community. We organized the Wacky Cracky Duck Strut Race, I don't know if any of you remember that, and raised money for CASA, that's been replaced by the Susan G. Komen Race. I also, in that function, created a directory for, of services for women and children, because I was the only one who actually understood computers and Excel. I've been a longtime member of the Sanger Heights Neighborhood Association. I served as vice president. We worked on alley cleaning projects, maintaining the gazebo at Sealy Park. I served as president two times, and the last, my last stint, we worked on the Community Garden, which was a, which is a block grant. We also organized three benefits fairs for the Sanger Heights residents. I translated for the organization all the flyers in Spanish and managed to get them distributed, we weren't counting on media at that point, got them distributed into, in the community. In Baylor, I've done a lot of things that would also help me on the council. I was the advisor for the Native American Student Association that sponsored powwells at the Pharaoh Center. We sponsored three powwells, and actually, we were the first group to dance on Baylor campus, thank you very much. As Director of Latin American Studies, I organized several academic conferences that dealt with issues of the Americas, not just Latin America, but the Americas. And we brought people from all over the country and outside the country into Waco for those conferences. I am currently the Director of the Model of Organization of American States. I have hosted four competitions here in Waco, as well as some workshops. So, again, bringing in students from Louisiana, Arkansas, New Mexico, Texas, and Mexico. I have been the Director of the Baylor in Argentina Program, and I've worked between the administrations at Baylor and the administrations at the university in Mendoza, Argentina, to put together our convenio. I also take students down there, and during the program in which they're immersed in Spanish, I also have them do community service projects within the community there. Let me see, what else do we have here? Outside of Baylor, I have been President of several organizations that deal with the issues of Latin American, and Latin American issues. I'm not going to name them all, because I realize if I look at Presidents of all this, it only means, it's not an honor, really, it's the person who will do the work, so. That's it. My international experiences include, I studied and traveled in Europe in my university's Study Abroad Program. I lived and did research in Mexico in nineteen seventy-four. I've lived extensively in Argentina. I was also in a faculty exchange to Morocco, largely because I spoke Spanish. And I have traveled with students to, I'm not going to list them all, all over Latin America. Other recognitions that I put in here, and I don't mean to put them in there to say, "Ooh, look at me," but rather to say, these are things that people have recognized about me that I think is probably important in terms of, you know, my qualities and my ability to stick with a program and work it through till the end. I'm not going to, I'm not going to say them, you have them. When I cannot do things in the community directly, I provide financial support to many institutions, both within Waco and the county, as well as around the world and in the United States, and there's a list of the programs that I support. With that, I think I'm going to stop and allow you, Mayor Meeks, to begin the question period.
Very good, thank you for this very great presentation, and it was such a joy for us to get to learn about you. First question is, did you vote in the May, in the last municipal election for District Four?
Yes. I vote by mail now, so, yes.
There you go. How do you see your role on the Waco City Council, and what do you hope to accomplish as a city council member?
I see my role as, obviously, being a voice for District Four, which has many challenges. In terms of what I hope to accomplish, I mean, since I'd be a new council member, largely what I think is important is to listen a lot and learn. What I hope to accomplish is to move the city forward, as everyone does, and to make it a place where everyone has a stake and everyone feels heard. So, I guess that would be what I would bring.
Very good. Next is, how do you see your role on the Waco City Council? Excuse me, what do you see as the opportunities and challenges facing our city?
Well, I think we have a lot of good opportunities, largely because we're on the map- map now. And when I went in for my doctor's appointment right before Christmas vacation, one of the, I told my doctor that I was going to be traveling to Philadelphia to see my family, and one of the things he wanted me to convey to them is that they shouldn't come, because he felt there were too many people here already. It was just too many people. So we do have that opportunity. We are on the map. We always, you know, when I first moved here, you know, we had Wake, we had Austin that was growing like crazy. We had Dallas and Fort Worth that was growing like crazy, and then there was Waco, sort of this little black, Waco actually means hole in Spanish, but a little black hole, which is no longer the case. We are on the map, and, and people are moving in, and there are opportunities here. So I think that that's important. But we still have so many problems that we're carrying through from the old days that I think we need to address. We have infrastructure problems. We have crime problems. We have, we have water issues now because of the drought. So I think there's a lot of things that we can do to begin to address those, those issues. And I think in some cases, there are also, you know, there's some hesitancy, I feel, not in all offices, because I have to say, the people that I had contact with to do this interview have been unbelievably excellent. But in some departments, there's a little hesitancy about, about getting things done, and I think we need to grease those wheels a little bit more. So that's what I would say.
Thank you. Next question is, what do you see as opportunities and challenges facing District Four, if those are any different from the city?
Yeah, District Four has, has issues with, and this has always been the case since I moved here in 1992, there's an issue of, a problem with code enforcement in the area. And I think that's, in terms of sort of maintaining the housing stock, I think that's very, very important. I mean, there's some, some houses that I drive past every day that surely should have some more attention paid to them. So I think that that's, that's a problem. Also, there's a problem of gentrification in District Four now with all the new attention to the city. You know, the houses on my block, for example, the value of them is inconceivable at this point in time. They're so expensive. And I just think, I don't know how the people, I mean, I'm up at the upper end of Parrot, the people down below Parrot, some of those houses are Section Eight, some of them are multiple, there are multiple, not families, but multiple individuals living in those houses. I think they're, they're, some of them are, some of them are undocumented, and I think that's also a problem for the city. We're going to have a lot more to do with undocumented people moving to the city and, and being able to provide for those people, which I think is critically important.
Thank you. You've outlined a bit of this, but the next question is, tell us what you think you bring to the position that others may not, and please provide examples of volunteer opportunities and services that you have provided in the community.
Well, again, I think if I use the Ted Lasso model, that I bring maybe a different perspective than other people who sit on the council. I mean, you've all done, obviously, an excellent job, but I may have other insights that I can bring to the table because of my extensive experience in working with, well, first-generation students and other, other people who live in my community who do not have a voice and do not get heard, particularly people who, you know, immigrants from El Salvador, Mexico, Guatemala, who don't, who, who don't understand how government works here and, and can't take advantage, I think, of a lot of the things that might be available to them. And I'm very passionate about that, because I think it's very important. I think they're going to be a very important part of this community, and we need to do a better job of reaching out to them. So that would, that would be it. In terms of volunteer opportunities, obviously, I've worked a lot with the Neighborhood Association. I have not worked with them recently, because as we moved past that block grant, I got sucked in more to the, to the work that I was doing at Baylor University. And when I take on a position, I do it full-on. So at this point, I'm transitioning out of those positions, and so I want to take my experience that I have from working in these areas and to be able to provide them to the city. So that's what I'd say about that.
Very good. Please explain your understanding of the city council's role in the council manager form of government, and how you'd work to govern effectively according to the city charter.
Okay. I actually have what you wrote on the, the website on that, but as a historian, I've studied city government, particularly as it altered during the progressive era and what that meant. And I've always been fascinated by the, you know, the idea that at one point, at-large was the way to go in order to break the, the boss system. And now, because of the civil rights movement, we've switched back to district representation. I find that really fascinating. I also understand the making city governments more effective by using a city manager who's a full-time employee, whose expertise is in city management. None of us are experts in city management. We don't have degrees in that, but the people that we hire do, who also work with the commissioners, who take care of fires, sanitation, water, the police, and other city services. And what the council does is set the policies for those folks. It's like the overbranch. This is what we do. We make the ordinances, and we work with those people to get those ordinances effectively applied.
Very good. The next question is, are you running in the May 2023 District Four election?
Like every, I don't know how many other people did that, but I know Chris just did. I, I don't know. I, I have been urged for decades by family and friends and people who know me to get involved in politics. And since my, my heart was in education, I didn't have the time to do that. Now that I'm moving out of education, I have the ability to do that. So I can't, I can't say yes or no. I just don't know. I will have to wait and see. No matter what happens, I mean, I will be more actively engaged in the community as I can take the energy that I used to put in Baylor and to put in other places. So I would say that.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for your time today. The last, or second to last question is, before we conclude, do you have any additional information regarding your qualifications that you'd like to share for this position?
You know, if it's not in that paper, I, I don't think so.
Well, our last question is, do you have any questions for us? And I do notice that you have some in your packet.
I do have some questions. So I want to ask each one of you, just to get an idea of where the council sits, what your most important issue is. So...
Why don't we go through our normal order? We'll start with Mrs. Holmes.
Okay.
Most important issue right now is getting a replacement for District Four.
Yeah, there you go.
I would say...
Josh, don't say parades.
Well, well, parades are where my heart is, but in terms of where my district is, Dr. Suppley, I would say, I have a pretty, along with Councilmember Holmes, I have a pretty fast-growing district, and over 50% of my district is out in the Midwest East School District, and there's a lot of roads that look like old county roads that now have a high-traffic volume on them. So my, my high priorities in terms of council budget has been road capacity upgrades and making sure that we meet quality-of-life needs for also these kind of high-growth suburbs.
I agree with that. I was on Cobb's the other day, and I was thinking, yeah, this probably needs some work.
Well, I get...
Me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. My, my, well, I have several important issues. Right now, like what Ruud said, is choosing our District Four representative, but my important issue in my district has always been our parks and our quality of life issues there. So I care a lot about that.
I understand that. Having worked in Seeley, with Seeley Park for a while, I, I understand that.
You mentioned earlier the deferred maintenance issues that are in, in our community. So for District One, it is infrastructure and access. Access to economic development, housing, I mean, access is our biggest challenge and the thing that I am most passionate about.
Okay, thank you.
I'll conclude by saying I think one of the most important issues facing our city right now is really prioritizing what we're working on. There's so many needs and also so many opportunities, and making the hard decisions of what do we need to take off the table? We can't do it all right now. That's easier said than done, certainly, but, and then I think the other issue facing our city is really implementing smart growth strategies. Waco is growing, but what are the strategies that uplift everybody as we grow?
Great. I also have noticed that there have been four vacancies in council positions since 2017. Do you guys have any insight about how, why that's happening?
I'll happily field that question. The first vacancy was District One, and that was because Reverend Austin had been diagnosed with terminal cancer and shortly thereafter passed away. The District Four vacancy, the first District Four vacancy, was me, and that was because it was at the beginning of the COVID pandemic, and my term was coming to an end. I was planning to run for mayor, and my wife and I purchased a home right outside the district line and with a closing date after the election. And then COVID happened, and the election got moved. So I resigned temporarily and then ran for the mayor seat in the November election, but that was another example of how COVID can throw off, throw off some people's, some folks' plans. The other District Four and District Two vacancies were for personal reasons for each of those individuals. Councilmember Palmer is the most recent member to create a vacancy and did issue a statement on her social media accounts, and some of that was reported, but again, primarily for personal reasons for her. So I, I hope that summarizes it a bit.
Okay, thank you. This is kind of a, just an oddball question, but I just wondered if the council had franking privileges?
And my, if you would clarify, my understanding of frankling, franking privileges is that that is post, paid postage to constituents, correct? And I was going to look over to our city attorney or city secretary on any answers that y'all might have for that.
So basic answer to that question is no. Okay. And then I, I think because I, because I looked at some of the previous interviews, that you all don't have assigned seats?
Well, actually, actually, we do. I mean, I don't know that they're, they're, but traditionally, we kind of go five, four, one, two, pro tem, mayor.
So there are assigned seats?
Yes.
Okay.
So that seat is always pro tem?
Yeah. This, and I'm a little... Pro tem, that's usually five. That's where Holmes says is usually four, but we've scooted it in to not leave a gap. Pro tem, mayor, one, and two works in.
And I assume the parking spaces are first-come, first-served out there?
Yes, the parking spaces are first-come, first-served. Yeah, that's right.
All right.
Great questions.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes, please.
Because one of the things that we've been talking about is, is outreach and transparency. And I know one of the ways that we outreach to the community is through the water bill. And I was, when I was looking at this, you know, and Councilmember Ruben, you can back me up, there's not a lot of Spanish in this thing. And we have a lot of, my district has a lot of Spanish speakers in it. And I think, for example, if, if we're going to do free, spade, and neutered, which is a need in my community, it would be nice if it were in Spanish, so people would know where to go to do it. Just, maybe that, that's my, my campaign for today.
Very great insight. Thank you so much for sharing that.
Thank you so much for your attention, and have a good lunch.
Thank you so much. I do, I do want to just conclude by saying how appreciative we are of your time and your sincere care for the community and the district. It's care from this packet, and from hearing from you today, how sincere your care and love for our city is, and that means so much to me. This is going to be an incredibly difficult decision. We've had incredibly competent and qualified and kind applicants that have applied, so all I can say is thank you so much.
Thank you all for the opportunity.
Have a great day.
Thank you too.
And it looks like we have one more candidate at noon. We keep getting further ahead, and I, I don't see him here, so we will recess until his arrival. At 11:49 AM, good morning and welcome. As I'm sure has been described to you, you will have an opportunity to give a three- to five-minute presentation, and then I will ask you some questions, and that'll be all for the day. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. One of the questions.
You can, if you wanted to give an introduction as to why you're interested in this seat, then please begin, and then from there, I'll ask some questions after that.
All right. My name is, my first name is Noe, and, and my second name is Israel, and my last name is Loachamin. I go for Israel because, I don't know, I was always called Israel. So originally, I'm from Quito, Ecuador, was born and raised there, and I came to the United States when I was 19, especially to the ballet. I was in Macallan for a year and a half and moved to San Antonio, left almost, well, more than 10 years over there, and met my wife, and got married, come to Baylor, and that was my journey, about my journey in the US. But I did have also the opportunity to, to study here in the US at my undergrad, and I moved to Baylor because of master and the doctoral program. And more about, about my personal journey is about learning about how someone who is an international student, working with visas, and then understanding the US immigration system, which is, was pretty shocking for me, but at the same time, a good learning opportunity. And even like, as I started working as, in an agency in San Antonio and moving where I'm leading right currently in, in Waco, especially to Spanish-speaking immigrants, and developing more in a, in a, in academic journey at Baylor, more in the, in the, learning about the structure and nonprofits, nonprofit, I'll say, the journey and the moving out as a, I'll say, as a father, and father of two sons, beautiful sons, and we love Waco now. I felt was like, can we move back to San Antonio? And I think Waco really became a home for us, and we have made, that's something like, we would love to continue here. It's pretty short, but I have my parents live in San Antonio, my mother-in-law lives close by in Clifton, where I was, I was always still trying to get connected with where I was raised, where I was raised, to Ecuador, doing missions trips to Puerto Rico, some one of the pastors there, and, yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Well, with that, I'll begin the questions, if that sounds good to you. Okay, the first question is, did you vote in the last municipal election for District Four?
Yes.
Good. Number two, how do you see your role on the Waco City Council, and what do you hope to accomplish as a Waco City Council member?
As, before I answer the question, there is, even like, connected with my journey about representation, about voice, about places where normally a Latino, Spanish-speaking, sometimes are not being heard, are not being listened in. So I would say like, I was seeing my role as, in this position, I would say, being the representation, being the voice, being the, someone that, being learning about the US immigration system, being in those spaces where normally Spanish-speaking only is not allowed. So I would say, seeing my role as the voice, representation, but also as a, when I say representation, first I would say like, listening. I live in District Four, and District Four is a growing Hispanic population. I would say representing them more as a community that is growing, but also as a someone that needs to be included in, in the District Four as a, as a voice. And I see more in that direction.
Very good. Next question, what do you see as the opportunities and challenges facing our city?
Something, in 2017, when I moved, moved out, I was like, I just want to get out. But I see like, the Magnolia Market, and then everything that the, the city is like, with a great potential, and even connecting with the Hispanic-Latino network, what the idea about creating a bilingual city, which is like, for me, was like, when I was, I grew up in Ecuador, I was like, Spanish-speaking only, and then you don't think about the, let's create a bilingual community, which is, I see the opportunities as a growing city, as the way like, can, can the city can even potentially create this mindset in the school districts, and the, the opportunity to have a bilingual city, which is more allowing people who are bilingual to have the opportunity to be compensated in that way, being proud of being bilingual as well, or Spanish-speaking only. Sometimes you're struggling with English, but at the same time, you are also like, facing that. That was the job for only, for those who are only English-only. So I see more in that challenging and... So I see more in that challenging and opportunities that I can, I would say, I can raise those, those questions.
Next question is, what do you see as the opportunities and challenges for District Four, if any, are different from the city?
I would say, I always try to get connected with the Neighborhood Association that, where I'm living at. And as, as I was sharing, I came to study at Waco, and I was so into in the, in my studies that I haven't, have the opportunity to connect to my Neighborhood Association. But I was trying to go to the meetings, and I don't stay longer. But I would say like, the challenges, really, I would say, include more Hispanic Latinos, especially those who are Spanish-speaking only. I, I see the, the challenges that are new, new businesses are growing. But I will be really interested how many of those Spanish-speaking only are going to those places, are receiving those, those services. And, and I will be very interested how, how many of those Spanish-speaking only are receiving the opportunities that the city is providing for the, I want to say it in this way, by the white population or the African-American population.
The next question I have is, tell us what you think you bring to the position that others may not, and please provide examples of volunteer opportunities or services that you have provided in the community.
My first time doing volunteering was at Gospel Cafe. And I always tried to, to go where, where there is a need, and listening to the stories. And that was my first immersion in Waco, my first, my first couple months, and seeing how the Gospel Cafe has been run, and, and seeing the, the people that come stand eat there. And my first, second immersion was about creating this community ministry at First Baptist Waco, as being a pastor and also working with a, you know, congregation who, with someone especially who was struggling and finding legal resources, especially someone who can trust, especially an attorney. And then I did for about four years as free, creating a community ministry to Spanish-speaking immigrants, developing as a becoming agency later on, but classes, connected with the community. It was, it was something like, I was able to do it. But I would say like, as bringing to the table, for me, creating this community ministry was creating a place, creating a safe space for someone to come and see the face, see the, see the, the same language, see the, see the environment, see how they feel. I would say their stories, narratives are, because that's the way that we communicate with, with, with the people. And I will, I will bring the, I'll say my person, I will bring my, who I am, who I've become, because I didn't grow up here, but my journey was about, especially in this, learning about the immigration system. Bringing about those who are in the low income. When we moved and got married, it was not like I was able to buy a house, like, $200,000 house. But seeing, even, even for me, as myself, my journey as a citizen, how exploring the housing, how exploring the different, hey, the taxes, how normally is calculated in the year. Hey, where I can find the resources if I'm moving to Waco, I'm new in the city. So I would say, bringing my person as, as I was further driving to Waco and even connecting with the, my volunteer opportunities that I had during those years. So, yeah.
Very good. Next question is, please explain your understanding of the city council's role in its council manager form of government, and how do you, how would you work to govern effectively according to the city charter?
As, I grew up in Ecuador, and I never was involved in politics. But at the same time, I'm a faith leader, and for me, it really is, is a, kind of, kind of understanding this, I would say, the United States, as I was seeing in Ecuador, someone who comes as a missionary, and hey, I would like to be that person, and seeing the journey here. But, but I see the opportunity of the city council and providing, I know it's in charge of all the budget, the strategies, the goals, for the, how as a city, it's not like a, hey, I wanna run for this politics or for this thing, it's more about working together for the community. Is, is what I think I see as my understanding about how I can provide even my, my personal, my leadership and if I'm considering to this.
Very good. The next question is, are you running in the May 2023 District Four election?
So my, my idea, and even in considering about applying to this, was, I know it's about four months, and I know in four months, I can really connect with the people and be a bridge for someone who would like to run. But I don't know yet. I don't have an answer to that question because as a graduate last year, I'm trying to find where I wanna end up in the coming months or year. But in even, I would say, there are personal, personal goals, or family goals that we have, maybe having a baby. So I don't know yet. But I would like to help in the four months that this position is open. So even be a bridge for someone who's becoming, or, yeah.
Very good. The next question is, before we conclude, do you have any additional information regarding your qualifications for this position that you'd like to share with us?
As, there is a quote that I always reflect in my mind. It is in Spanish, but I would try to translate. And says like that, el honor es vivir en una comunidad que te apoya, que te da oportunidades, que cree en ti, que confía en ti, que te da la seguridad, que te deja hablar, y sobre todo, que te deja ser un ser humano. So it is an honor to live in a community that you receive the help, the opportunity, believe in you, trust you, give you the security, allow you to speak, and allow you to be a human being. And, and I reflect a lot, a lot in my, in my, in my personal life. As I started my journey as someone, I was alone by myself here. I didn't have any family here. Came as, when I was nineteen years old, and learning about the, I remember one of the times I crossed to Mexico and traveling with my friend, I forgot one stamp. And at the end, when I had to come back, hey, they put me back, say, and I was crying. I said, hey, what are they wrong? I didn't have someone to call, say, hey, can you come and pick me up? So I think everything that has been my, my journey in the U.S., and even bringing about the, the, learning about the process, how late sometimes, who would love to have, like, in the timeframe that normally we see in the paper, but even the opportunity about working at an agency that receives minors from the border, and then reunifying with their families, and seeing, I was able to, to see a couple of them, and reunify with their families, seeing the joy, how they reunified again. And even working with the families that, sometimes they are struggling to find a job. And hey, there is this opportunity, and connecting them. There's a, a thing as a, as a person, I get fun to be a connector. I'm a husband, not perfect, trying to be, love my family, but also at the same time, I'm a father. So I want, I would like to provide everything that I can for my family. As a pastor, as a faith leader, and I'm still struggling with how can I approach as a faith leader, but there is a big faith in my life. And a community leader, I know anything on my, if my voice is being raised, or something I can provide through a letter, I know I can be the support for the community. I would say at the end that there is a mission that I have in my life. I've been really wrestling during this year, is in Spanish, but I will translate, and says, dejar un legado de ser un ser humano es dejar lo que amo en la vida, y especialmente, lo que es mi familia. As I reflect, and what I can provide as a human being is about the way I'm living and also the way I'm loving my family. And there is a picture always in my mind about my wife and my kids and my family, which is, has everything for them, and I can be a voice and a place, and a public space, and, and something that I can provide is everything about them, providing a safe space, opportunities, and a legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Last question, do you have any questions for us?
I'm pretty new about this environment. I would like at least, at least to know your name and who you are, if I can.
That's great. We'll go down the list. Your name, and what council seat you represent?
Jim Holmes, District Five, which is the western parts of the city.
Josh Borderwood, District Three, which is inside... Josh Borderwood, District Three.
Dylan Make, Mayor.
Alicia Rodriguez, yo represento el sur de Waco, Distrito numero dos. Mucho gusto señor, bienvenido.
Andrea Bearfield, District One.
Thank you, Mr. Loachamín. It is gonna be such a challenge for us to determine who to fill this seat with such qualified candidates who have thrown their name in the ring. But your care for our community is evident, and we're so grateful for your participation in this process. And it was a sincere honor hearing from you today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 12:07 p.m.
Personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074, City Council Member for District Four. We are now in executive session.
Reconvene the January 10th, 2023, 8:30, or excuse me, uh, yes, 8:30 a.m. meeting to order at 1:15 p.m. With no further business, we will adjourn this meeting at 1:15 p.m. Thanks, everybody.